Cox, roll call please.
Chairman Cox?
Here.
Commissioner Hayman?
Here.
Commissioner Mondragon?
Here.
Commissioner Ferris? No? So, three present, we have a quorum.
Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. We have a new commissioner that is being sworn in this evening, so we would like to turn the time over to Rikeshar Lon for the swearing in.
I, Megan Richter.
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend...
...the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation...
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully...
And that I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
You're welcome. I will sign this very.
Okay. Sounds good, thank you so much.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
that she could join us and be part of us when she is prepared.
Check, check.
Is your button light on?
Now it is.
Okay.
Yeah, can you hear me?
All right. All right, so we're going to move on. Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
One second.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayman?
Aye.
Commissioner Mondragon?
Aye.
And then Commissioner Richard?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
I also have, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of our previous meeting?
All motion.
Second.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayman?
Aye.
Commissioner Mondragon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richard?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Now, we carried over this public hearing, I need to reopen it, do I not?
Yes, this is a new public, a new public hearing, so you will, you will open it.
Okay, so, we're going to open the public hearing here today on an item that is before us, and that will be after our public comments. So persons wishing to address the commission on matters that are within the commission's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant the Brown Act, the planning commission may take no action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The public comments and the section of the agenda are limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Now be mindful, that's if it's not on the agenda. Do we have anybody that wants to comment on public hearing? Anybody in Cyberland? Moving on, we're going to open this public hearing at 6:05. It's a site plan review, 22-02 Oasis Motel addition, construction and application for 14 additional units to an existing motel located at 1033 North China Lake Boulevard, Zone General Commercial, APN 067-022-11 and 067-022-10. Staff report.
Good evening. So this is a site plan. The existing hotel is located on China Lake Boulevard. The access to the site is on China Lake Boulevard. This parcel is behind that with access that would come from Sanders Street. The parcel was previously used for storage of heavy equipment or something. It is Zone General Commercial, and the general plan designation for this is commercial. There are two parcels in the conditions of approval which were added to the agenda, so there's a resolution that is up front here, so if you don't have the conditions of approval, the updated resolution is up here in the front for the public. However, in the conditions of approval, there is a lot line adjustment. These will not be merged, but there will be an adjustment that will move the boundaries of the lot line as part of the project as well. One of these existing structures, this small one that you'll see, a white building, would be demolished to add in their new buildings. This is some elevation, so it kind of shows you what they're proposing for these structures. These are one bedroom. They are single story. There is one building that is two bedroom. Again, it's single story. This is the proposed site plan, so again, you're going to see the access would come from Sanders Street. There is a drive aisle on the northern boundary of the property, the 14 units, there's a walking path in the center between the units, and then the furthermost structure is a two bedroom. The parking is around the exterior of those buildings. The applicant is proposing an emergency access on Balsam Street. Usually, the fire department requires two entry points, so this would not be for circulation for the public, but it would have a gate that would allow the fire department or any other emergency services access to the property should they need it. But it would be gated so that there wouldn't be potential impact to the Balsam Street there. There is also, the client is proposing drainage that would come out onto Sanders Street. I would let Travis talk about public works if you have questions on some of the public works conditions. As part of the project, it is Zoned Commercial, and so for commercial property, the parking requirements for motel use is one for each guest room, and then one parking space for every two full-time employees. When they submitted the parking, as it's shown right here on the site plan, it did include 15 parking spaces, which would cover the number of rooms. But we did discuss with the applicant, and if you look at this map, where the blue arrow is, we asked the applicant, and they agreed to change these parallel parking and change them horizontally so that this space could accommodate five parking spaces. So that would give them an extra three, so then they would have enough for the rooms and more than enough for employee parking. At first, the consideration was their employees would probably be utilizing the parking on the existing motel facilities anyway, considering that's where their washing facilities and most of their, you know, housekeeping and stuff would come from anyway. But we were able to squeeze in more parking, so it'd be better just to have more than to possibly impact the residential. In addition, this is just an idea that the applicant has provided that shows some renderings of what these structures look like. In the conditions of approval, there is also conditions for landscaping. As you're aware, we do require low water or no water landscaping. There's conditions for that, the applicant's aware of that, they agree to that. On the site plan, there was not onsite lighting. We did discuss that with the applicant, it is conditioned on there that there would be parking lot lighting that would also illuminate the drive approaches, but would not impact the surrounding properties. The applicant has agreed to that as well. So staff recommends approval of the project, oh, also too, this, this project does qualify for SEQA exemption. It is infill, the property is under five acres, it's surrounded by developed property, it's already been previously used, so there is no environmental impact, there is no endangered species, so staff would recommend the categorical exemption. But staff recommends approval with the conditions. Travis is here, if you have questions for public works conditions, and the applicant is here as well, Gene, so if you have any questions for him, he is available for those.
Commissioner, comments? Any questions you'd like to ask the applicant or staff? So before I get to staff, would the applicant come up here? Introduce yourself, please.
Good evening, my name is Gene Adelman, and I am a co-founder of Azure Printed Homes. We're going to be providing homes for this development. Keon Baga wasn't able to attend, he's a property owner, he asked me to attend on his behalf.
Okay, so you're the developer of the building?
Correct.
Okay, so the first question may not apply to you. My understanding is that we're going to take the current lot line, which is on the west side of the building that's being distracted, and we're moving it to the east side of According to the next drawings, go to the next drawing.
It's about the center line of Balsam.
Okay, on the center line of Balsam. Okay, now give me a picture of the building itself. Okay, so you're the developer of this building, you've been here today, we have weather in the summer of 107 to 121 degrees. With that much glass, you're not worried about...
Yeah, there, really, the glass is just an option for demonstration purposes, so you can see what looks inside the building. You're absolutely right, there is no need to have this much glass, and there is no need, I mean, it would not be good for this property. So the shape of the building is exactly like it is, but instead of the whole wall of glass, there is just going to be a window and a door, everything else would be closed.
Okay, similar to a motel.
Well, it's going to be, it'll look exactly like this, the only thing is we'll put the glass on so you can see what's inside the building, but we envision just having a window and a door, yeah, similar to a one-bedroom or two-bedroom unit.
Okay, and so the unit would qualify under the new zoning, or not zoning, but building requirements as far as R factor on the heating and air conditioning and...
Yeah, it's very, it has very good insulation, and we will get approval for, the buildings are going to be built at the factory, we're going to have full approval from the State of California of the plants and of the building. They'll be inspected, and we'll have a California State insignia before they're delivered here. We are going to be able to achieve at least R30 on all sides of the building, so it's very, very efficient.
Okay, and, and was your company responsible for kind of the site plan that you put together here?
Actually, we recommended an engineer with experience here in Rich Crest to the owner, and the owner hired them directly.
Okay, thank you. Travis? Write your questions down when I'm done. A couple of questions. There was a mention that initial design was going to put the runoff onto Balsam, or not Balsam, but Sanders. In previous commercial, even out at the triangle and stuff like that, we've had them retain a certain amount. Is there any retention being required of this commercial property?
The, there is a condition that says the city reserves the right to require retention once we've seen runoff calcs. In my opinion, with what we have here, provided that the landscape can accept water, I don't feel that the amount of water that we would see reaching our streets would constitute something that we would need to have onsite retention.
No consideration of maybe a dry well with a man cover on it?
So actually, dry wells with a man cover on it are no longer allowed.
Okay.
So, the, the state has kind of done away with those. On residential lots, you can do what they call rain gardens, but they're very minimal, they're more for like downspouts on single-family residences. But I actually, in my private business, tried to do it on a commercial lot in Kern County in Lake Isabella, and that, that was where I learned that they were no longer allowed.
Do you want to sit at that mic so you're not breaking your neck?
If one of them asks me a question, I'll, I'll be breaking my neck that way.
All right, moving on, am I looking at these pictures, and we've got a 10-foot setback from curb off of Sanders?
I believe that is what it is, I don't remember exactly, and with it being commercial, they are actually allowed to have a zero-foot setback.
Yeah, it looked like there was a 10-foot setback given there.
Correct.
That's why I was asking.
It is a 10-foot setback. They are proposing to abandon an existing waterline easement, as well as an existing waterline that runs on the south side of the property from the west side of Balsam and ties into Sanders, and they're going to install a new waterline that runs on the projection of Balsam and through the drive aisle and ties back into Sanders.
Will you explain the additional lighting that we've requested, and they've said that they're willing?
So the applicant said that they were going to provide lighting on the structures. Staff didn't feel that there would be enough lighting on the entrances with the emergency exit on Balsam Street and with a lock box and, or knock box, or whatever Kern County Fire is going to require, we felt it necessary to have some sort of lighting in that area so people don't go crashing through it. Currently, there is a fence there, so we felt that maybe a light that's offset further on property, just so it illuminates that enough to where you can see that there is a fence there would be adequate.
Important, yeah.
Yep. And then we wanted them to be able to utilize the lighting for more than just the entrances, so I think with the engineer's knowledge, they could strategically place them to where they could both benefit them in the drive aisle and the parking area, as well as the entrance on Sanders.
Okay. Last question for the designer, for you, is, and I should have asked you to stay there for a minute. Would you be willing to provide a final drawing of what they're actually going to put in instead of a concept?
Yeah, 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 we will provide final drawing, and it'll look very similar to this, the only difference is going to be the class.
Sure, no, and that's, that's fine, I just want to not have a concept on file.
Okay, absolutely.
Okay, commissioners, any other questions you want to ask?
I do, I do have a question. So, these units haven't been built yet, have you built these units somewhere?
Yeah, we build a model unit, and, and of course, we will, it's a totally new process, we're going to be 3D printing them. And so, you know, they're much faster to build, they're less expensive to build, so, you know, in the current increasing interest rate environments, still feasible because it's going to be fast, there are no supply chain issues. Yeah, so we build a model, and we're going to be starting, our production line is starting in October.
Okay.
And all of the information on the company and the concept is azureprintedhomes.com. And of course, if you have any questions even after the meeting, feel free to reach out.
Okay. Any other comments, commissioners?
I do have a question just about the process. You said these are built in the factory, but my, the only familiarity I have with 3D printed buildings is concrete, so is it, are you're building concrete offsite and then...
No, this isn't, these are not concrete. You're absolutely right, so concrete are usually built onsite.
Yes.
These are built with recycled material.
Okay.
So it's 60% plastic and 40% fiberglass. It achieves rigidity off concrete, but of course, much more environmentally friendly. You know, for every pound of concrete, you have pound of steel too, so, concrete is kind of the least environmentally friendly material, but here, you know, we're going to actually use about 1,000 pounds of recycled plastic in order to build this community. It comes with a UV stabilizer and UV protection is going to be warranted for at least 15 years, and units will meet all of the residential codes, residential code established by the State of California. The State of California adopted recently standards for 3D printing.
Did not know that.
It's moving very rapidly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ritchie. Commissioner Hayman? Anything? Okay, so at this time, I'd like to turn the time over to the public if there's any comment or questions that they would like. And you can ask it of the commission, or you can ask it of the builder, or the developer, or the staff.
My name is Denise Kite. I'm a property owner of 825 North Balsam and 817 North Sanders, and I have a list of questions, I don't know, you want me to just rattle these off, answer them, I'm not sure how we go about this process, but the lighting was one of them. We came in Monday and talked with Heather and got all these diagrams, and it says on it, I wasn't sure about the outside lighting and what type of security lighting will be installed. The site plan just calls out site lighting will be mounted on proposed units. What are the proposed units? Where are they located?
Yeah, so each one of the units will have a light outside their door, similar to any other apartment or hotel or motel. What we add, had them add today, I think it was today or yesterday, was we were concerned, especially with the emergency exit gate that's going to be put in on Sanders...
Balsam.
That if somebody had, no, Sanders, not Balsam, Sanders, that if they came, in the case of an emergency, they wouldn't see the lock access or be able to enter the code or anything else. So that entrance is going to be illuminated, and the front entrance is going to be illuminated. Okay, so you're not going to get light wash in other areas of, of the, you know, the area, the neighborhood.
Are these units facing each other with a walkway in between them?
Yeah, did you see, right here, you can see how they're faced? Okay, so you have...
I wasn't sure with that picture.
Yeah, you see the drive?
The drive goes down the side.
A laser?
Right.
I don't.
All right, so...
Yeah, I know that the...
You see the drive right here, up here?
Correct.
Okay, and so, these, these are facing this way, as I saw the other drawing, and these are facing each other, is that correct? Correct?
Correct.
Okay, so they're facing this way, but they're a low-light LED, similar to your porch light.
So, the, 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 the,[1514.33] the, 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 the,[343.12]
One night, they'll have an option. But it'll be an effort to go around the block and park in the property.
And what is the current? Do you know what the current occupancy rate is for Oasis? Is it pretty consistent at like 50%?
Yeah, it's about 50%. And there is always plenty of parking. I've been to the property a number of times. Even when we started working on this in January, it has, I don't know exactly the count, but way over the requirement.
So you don't anticipate 100% occupancy?
Well, A, we don't anticipate a lot of 100% occupancy. And B, we think that people who are coming in for short stay will check in, register, and just walk over.
So will the appeal of these properties be kind of that they're newer and fancier hotel rooms? Or what is the drive to make these new properties?
Yeah, there is a demand for newer. I mean, Oasis is one of the oldest hotels in town. So there is a demand for newer units. And the owner thought that doing development using our units is going to be very innovative. They look terrific. And it's, you know, he felt, and he is right, it is going to be less expensive to build, you know, one-story structures. I mean, I think he could have built two-story structures on this property. So he felt that it'd be friendly to the neighborhood and less expensive to build and also, you know, very attractive.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
I have a question.
What's that? Time? Well, if he's got a question for him, you need to wait, please.
So when people are checking in, they're going to have to drive into the Oasis parking lot, right? So if you have, you know, 10, 15 units and everybody shows up at the same time, that means that everybody's going to drive into that parking lot and find a parking spot there, check in, and then drive around the block to get to their unit.
I really think that's realistically how it's going to, at least on the day of a check-in, that's what's going to happen. If they stay more than one night, it'll be much more convenient to park by your unit. But if it's a, you know, one-night stay, the walkover from there is literally very short.
That was it.
Thank you.
What would be the reason to abandon water easements and install a new one?
To facilitate use of the property. They want to put the water line where they have open space where people are driving so that way they can utilize the backspace for units. So they're going to, they'll have to go through a process with the county to abandon the easement, in which the Water District will have to sign off, which means the Water District will probably want to see complete plans for where it's going to be installed. They'll require dedication of another easement. So they're trying to focus all their utilities into an area where it can be used for common space rather than hindering where they can put units. And also technically with that easement, right now, you see the dashed line where the units are going through on the south side of the property?
Yes.
So with that easement, without abandoning that easement, they can't build within that easement. There's a clause in the easement that basically says that no structures can be built over the district's access easement, access for maintenance purposes and all that good stuff. So in order to use that, they have to abandon it and abandon the water line and move the water line.
Got it. Thank you.
Bernie?
So on the traffic, coming into the parking lot, you don't think that that would cause any kind of traffic issues or jams onto China Lake? Because I go, I go in and eat at Midway, you know, at least once a week, and I, sometimes I struggle to find a parking spot, so.
So we can only require what the code requires. Based on the code, they've met the parking requirement. So I don't have much for you. The only one thing I will say, I think having parallel parking and dealing with turning around, if you parked driving in, could be tough. But that's not to say we don't have a full grading plan. That's not to say they're not going to have a turnaround in that corner or they're not going to have something set up with enough room where you can turn around. If it's one owner, he can put pavement across the property line. There's nothing that says we can't have pavement across property lines.
So they could potentially do like a drive, it would just be like driving through the property onto the back property, right?
That, I would say you don't have enough room.
Not enough room.
So that's why I would say that there's potential room for them to have a turnaround at the backside, and that would be about what you can do. I don't think with the current construction with how the offshoot from the side of the hotel would facilitate a full drive-through.
Gotcha. Okay.
And if the commission wishes, I can request accident data and see if there's been more accident data on Howell and Sanders Street.
That is always good.
Vanessa? I'm medicated.
No, my main thing is like, how are they going to turn around if they pull in this way? Do they turn around down here and then exit out on Sanders?
And just keep in mind, Planning Commission can amend the conditions and add the conditions for a turnaround on the south side.
So you'd prefer them entering off of China Lake and exiting onto Sanders?
Well, I don't know. I mean, because when you look at it, so they come in off of Sanders right here, right? And then like, do they park this way or this way? So then they would have to turn around.
Well, your office is all the way the opposite end, so why would you?
Can they drive all the way through?
No.
Okay.
Seems like a tight fit.
Yeah.
It is definitely a tight fit.
But you also have to think about occupancy, right? There's an assumption that some folks are making that this is going to be 100% occupied all the time, and that's fundamentally not a consistent rate of occupancy, rate of busyness that a lot of hotels in Richcrest see. So you might have some Friday night busies right around 7:00, 8:00 p.m. when people are getting in from a long drive, but you're not going to be seeing, you know, Bishop on a Saturday level parking issues because that's just not fundamentally the same kind of traffic that we have here. It's a perspective, it's an opinion, it's not fact, but you're not going to, they've stayed, the owners have stated that they typically don't see greater than 50% to 70% occupancy on a good day or a good week.
Well, and my comment would be that too is when they've reported the guest, there's a guest tax basically to all the hotels and motels in the valley. When they talk about occupancy, none of them are reporting 100% occupancy. I think in the busiest times, they've seen 76, 78, but never 100%. I don't think any hotel business plan would ever say, we have to have 100% occupancy to survive. Because you're right, no. At least in my history and in his history being here, the motels were full Monday through Friday and weekends they were bare. I mean, that was our history. The other thing we have to look at is the contractors on base are going to go away at some point. And so if somebody's putting their business plan only around that, you know, that absolutely has to be their choice. But, you know, that could be concerning from a business plan, but that's not what we're here to answer. And so they presented, you know, we're within code. We can see some challenges. One of the things, I read the resolution after the addition of lighting and different things and the width of, you know, parking, our path of travel, so on and so forth. The only thing that I would like to add personally to the resolution is that on the south side of the property, facing Mr. Kite's property, I think that there should be a seven-foot block wall put up. Right now, it's a wood fence as I drove by it, is it not?
Yep.
That is a condition per our code for a six-foot block wall.
Well, I think if we're going to have 72 lighting...
Yeah, but 72 lighting is where it would be mounted.
Right.
Not necessarily where the actual projection of the light is.
Yeah, the light is not going to be facing that property. The entry for the units will decide, so there's not going to be any light.
So you feel six foot is sufficient?
I feel six foot is what is required by our code, is what I feel. And to speak further on his, I wouldn't see a need or a want to put, I mean, correct me, what's your, I don't see a dimension, a call-out for what the dimension was from the property line to the back of the unit. So what is that, like five feet? So there really wouldn't be a need to light that back area. So the lighting is going to be facing on those units that are further to the south are going to be facing east and west.
Right.
And moving to the south, the conditions say no lighting facing that property.
Yeah, and that's how I assumed it too, that there was no south-facing lighting.
The conditions do state that they can't have lighting that impacts the adjacent properties. It is in there. It's, I don't have it in front of me. Chairman? I think she stole mine.
While she's looking for that, Mr. Kite, do you have something you want to add?
Yeah, I, you know, I think that this gentleman here, I don't know that he has any financial interest in this property other than supplying the buildings. And he's making comments about the long-term prospects of what the owners may or may not be doing as far as, you know, separating those two pieces of property and selling them off as apartments or something.
Have you read, have you read these conditions?
I, no.
The new ones that she got today?
I have gone through them, yeah.
Okay.
I personally do not have. I'm listening to what she's saying.
Okay. So here's the deal. We put conditions on a site plan, and they can still turn down those conditions and appeal to the city council, or they can comply with those conditions. And so what we do is we have to look at everything and say, is this reasonable without being over burdensome?
Correct.
You know, for any developer.
Yeah.
And so it's not that we did hear you. In fact, in some of the instances, the commission actually come up with lighting and parking before we actually came to this meeting, and there were adjustments, an additional five stalls put in and entrance lights put in to accommodate for those ingress, regress. And so there's only certain things that we can require according to the building code. Now, we can add things and take things away if we find them completely unreasonable, but we can't go beyond the code.
And I think because of, you know, with my experience with the other places that we have, security lighting around those buildings is probably going to be mandatory by their insurance company or something, okay? And I think that if they bonnet those lights, I don't have a problem with that as long as they're not shining directly into...
Well, and I'd imagine they'd be ground-based anyway.
But, you know, my, our major concern, of course, is the parking and, you know, also what the long-term things happen there, you know? And, you know, this guy's interest is in supplying the building, not into this gentleman's long-term investment.
Yeah, he is here representing the developer. That was his assignment, is representing the developer.
Yeah, but, you know, it, you know...
He's spending the developer's money for him.
Yeah, and that's just my point, he can't. And the other thing, if you do put conditions in on, you know, what the long-term effects are, once that property changes title to another owner, it's a whole new ballgame. So, you know...
Well, I understand.
I mean, if he was to sell off the whole project, the new owner, you know, he's pretty much do whatever he wants, and I've seen that happen before, so.
Well, and we have no guarantees. I mean, I look at some of the motels down here that have gone in and their occupancy and things that it may or may not affect. And so we can't make decisions on what if. We can make decisions on what we can control.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, if, the whole thing is, is the Planning Commission is limited in some of the things that they can do. And if we approve here tonight with certain changes to the conditions, the developer still has a right to refuse it.
Sure, yeah.
Or he has the right to appeal it to the city council and say, I don't like this and this and this, and the city council can then say, no.
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to, you know, take into consideration...
No, and I appreciate that.
Who's making decisions for the gentleman that owns the place, you know? And I'm sure, I'm sure he'd just like the rest of it, he just wants the money.
We also have to trust our staff because they've worked with both of them.
Yeah.
So when they present the staff report.
Okay.
So kudos to our staff.
I might be done.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So commissioners, have you got my copy? No, right here. Do you have any other comment? If not, I would like to propose that we approve it with one addition of adding a six-foot block wall on the west side. Is it currently added in there to remove the, or excuse me, the east or south side? I did not see that.
Yeah, per our code, anything that abuts as commercial, abutting residential, has to have a block wall.
Okay, so it's already in there, so I don't have any changes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayman?
Aye.
Commissioner Mondrayan?
Aye.
And Commissioner Richard?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. I'd like to close this public hearing at 5:56. Moving on, we'll go down to commissioners' comments and reports. At this time, before we go into the reports, I flat missed it. And here, I thought I took a blind cue. It was harassing you.
It's in mine and his.
Yes, okay. Commissioner Jenkins had two assignments with relationship to committee assignments. Would you be willing to assume those? And Heather, do you know when they're meeting?
So the committee schedules is the last page in your agenda. So there's infrastructure, economic development, quality of life, and city organization. I do not remember which ones that Jenkins was on, but...
He was on quality of life.
Okay.
Let me come here. Okay, so even though you see my name on quality of life, I filled in while he was gone.
Okay.
So that's why you see that there. I'm on infrastructure, and Bernie is on infrastructure. We come down to economic development. We will have Bill Ferris. And Bernie, I think you wanted to stay on that committee, right?
Which one?
The economic development?
Yes.
Okay. And so that would be asking you to do the quality of life, and looks like that's the only one.
I'm happy to volunteer as tribute for quality of life.
Okay, and did you look at the date that they meet, first Tuesday at 5:30?
Yes.
Okay. So we'd like to, commission would like to appoint her to that committee. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Let's not make it too formal.
All right.
Okay, and before we get to staff comments, do we have any committee reports that we would like to give? Vanessa?
For city org, I did not make that meeting. And then quality of life was going over the grants that we got in doing the turf for fields and stuff at Leroy Jackson.
Okay, so what the quality of life and this will benefit Megan is that the grants, in fact, I ought to actually ask the Navy to, he was here. But we're working on grants and received grants to broaden the shade structures over the softball fields and that, change some of the fields with artificial turf to try and conserve water. We're looking at other opportunities to maybe changing out other fields into artificial turf and the financial assistance that we might get. In years past, we used to be able to use the Navy's fields, and that's not happening anymore. And so 100% of that falls here, both with the youth and the adults. And so we're trying to look at ways to conserve water as well as utilize the grants that are available in conservancy. So you'll get into that as you go into your committee. And that was what we spent most of our time on. Bernie, do you have anything on yours?
No, I haven't been to, I didn't go to the last two committees that I'm assigned to.
Well, infrastructure's been canceled, the last two meetings.
That's true.
We didn't have anything too pressing, and then Kyle was out of town this last month. So, anyway, okay, so this is stuff that the commissioners that have been here for a while already know, and so I just want to give some information so that you feel you have access. So when you receive a report or a resolution like we have, as you go through it, if there's an acronym or if there's something that you don't understand, staff is available. You can call Travis, you can call, what's your name?
My name is Heather.
I'm medicated. See, I can make fun of myself too. Anyway, anyway, or call Heather. And, or you can call one commissioner. Only one.
Only one. It's my lifeline.
Right. Now, you don't have to call the same one every time. So you may have an issue this month, and you call Bernie. Or next month, you may feel like you want to call Vanessa or me. But you can only call one. The only time you can talk to the rest of the commissioners is here. Otherwise, it's a violation of the Brown Act. Okay, so it's very important you have free access to the staff. So you don't want to come not knowing the answer to what your question is. How come we're doing this? Or why are we doing this? How come we didn't do this? Those are the times to ask so you have the answers to them, is to ask the staff, okay? The other thing is that I've canceled everybody is, please, your life experience is absolutely invaluable. I don't care who you are, you know, anybody out here, their life experience is invaluable. And what you bring to the table is an individual perspective of what's happening here. And so we don't want somebody that's going to go along to get along. If you agree with it, you agree with it. If you don't, ask the questions until you're satisfied with the answers. If we need to table it and bring it back another month, we can do that. The commission has options. You don't have to feel saddled into a vote. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So there is a delay with this. I don't always push it on and off, but if you feel comfortable with it, that's fine. Sometimes there's a delay. Once you'll see the green light, it's not really active yet. Okay, so that's the only counsel that I give to the commission is, please raise your voice, you did very well tonight, very proud of you, and use your staff and get the information that you need. She generally, Heather, what's your name, Heather?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Vanessa? How often, how soon do we get the information? Thursday?
Mm-hmm.
Before the Tuesday?
Yep.
So you should have a weekend to digest it, and if there's questions, Monday or Tuesday to get any answers.
I did notice recently on the city page that the hyperlinks were broken, so I was trying to reread the agenda and everything and unable to access it on my mobile browser. So that might be an IT thing, but just a heads up.
Yeah. Very good. Well, and you're proactive, and good for you. Does she have a copy or access to the municipal code and all that? Okay, so she's helped you with that? And I would like Heather at some point to take you kind of on a tour, okay? So that you feel like this is access to the people's house. You represent them, okay? And as I always counsel too, you know, if you were an elected instead of an appointed, you're not responsible just to those that elect you, you're responsible to the whole community. So please take that into account. How does it affect everybody? Okay, staff?
So I did not get to address Mrs. Kite there on the public noticing.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, the municipal code requires, which is just kind of standard, is the 10-day for public noticing. And, you know, I realize in modern times that can be problematic, and even right now, I have a stack of returned public notices on my desk. What we go off of is the mailing address that the assessor's office has on file. In an effort to try to communicate more effectively with the public, not just those that are within the 300 feet, but just with everyone in general, because you may be interested even if you're outside of the 300 feet. And, I mean, I think the Kites for coming down and participating, as you all are aware, we don't get a lot of participants, so it is great to see anybody down here participating. So the, I have taken the planning website and updated that over the past month. So if you guys have some time, take a look. It should be a lot more user-friendly. But one of the things that I did add on here is it's a Google map, and on the map, it has the current planning projects that we will be hearing for public hearings. And on it, as Mr., as our chairman can see here, because he's sitting right next to me...
What's my name?
Mr. Cox. Chairman Cox here. So it's our planning projects, and it's nice because it shows you exactly where they're located, it gives you a picture, it tells you what the project is and the public hearing date. This will eventually integrate into the, economic development has a map. What this will eventually do is populate their map because we usually hear things before they come to economic development as a project. So, and it has pictures of the development. So this will continue to add projects on there to hopefully get more information out to the public and reach more people. And then hopefully I'll be able to work with Isabel and Megan on circulating this in some of the social media that they already use. But it also has the rest of our stuff on here. There's also some opportunities for people to ask some basic questions. So if people are trying to find out, you know, the popular one lately is about chickens. So if you have a question, you can send over that right on the website now. A lot of times, realtors have questions about possible uses on property. They can send those now right through the website. So this is all new, and it's all here right on the planning page. So that's all in there. So hopefully that's a lot more user-friendly for the public, and hopefully we can get some more people to see what we're doing down here.
Thank you. Any other staff items for us?
I've said this before, but I will say it again. So we are in the midst of preparing to do our housing element update. The current COG has circulated our regional housing needs allocation numbers, so that's coming before us. Once we kind of have that and the final, which will be next month, that will be approved, then we can start looking out for consultants and start moving ahead with that. We have to have a final approved housing element by December of 2023. So we need to get that underway. We will also have to update our safety element, and we will also have to do an environmental justice element. So we have three elements that need to be updated, so we will be very busy doing a lot of that. There is a lot of municipal code updates that will be coming before you, hopefully within the next month. Our city attorney is working on the language on those, so hopefully we can get those going so that when we have consultants on board to start our housing element, we have all of the current state regulations already adopted so that we can proceed.
Thank you. So an adjournment here, I want to thank the commission and our staff for all that they've done. So I'm going to close the meeting at 7:10.